We're going to start out with as we normally would, then we're going to adjust the agenda, and we're going to do the bidding first. So if you came just for the bidding, you don't have to sit through the whole thing unless you desire to. We always enjoy having people here listening and asking questions as we go along anyway. The Board will meet in regular session on Tuesday, February 20th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. in the Courthouse Meeting Room Number Two Northeast Corner, Third Floor with three members present. Would you join me with a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. Are you requested to approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process of any agenda item is for the chairperson to read the item from the agenda. The Board is given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented, at which time the public may participate in roll call vote. Okay. I would entertain that we have a motion to approve or amend the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any questions or comments? If not, roll call vote, please.
Selassie?
Yes.
Paton?
Yes.
Thompson. Yes.
The motion is carried. So at this time, the Chair is going to ask item number nine, which would be on page five. That's the lease county farm ground bidding letting be moved to the first. So we will go then to item number nine at this point. The leasing the county farm ground bid letting, a lease of 230 acres, more or less, in Section Nine and Ten Township, 83 North Range, 19 West Washington Township, effective March 1st, 2018, February 2, February 28, 2021. Okay, that means it's a three-year lease. Additional terms of the farm lease were contained in a requested bid package as advertised in the Times Republican Newspaper on January 15th, 2018, and the Mid Iowa Enterprise Newspaper on January 18th. Okay. Madam Auditor, how many written bids did we receive?
We received three written bids.
Three written bids? And they ranged in.
I have not opened them.
Okay.
So we are giving the official opening right now, so I'm going to chief over first.
This is the legal way to do this, yes.
Okay, so the first one was received February 2nd. And it is from, the bidder is Mike Hotop. Total bid amount is $56,100. Someone else will have to do math behind there. The second one was received on February 20th, and I'll give the time because we had two bids today. This one is at 8:25 a.m. And this is from Andy Chima. Am I saying it right? Good. $275 per acre, for a total of $63,250 per year, and then has the three-year price of $189,750. And then the final one was received today on February 20th at 8:35 a.m. And this is from Bennett Mann, for a total of, the annual total of $46,232.
We thank you for submitting the written bids. That does a couple of things. If you were not able to be here, then you are participating in it whether you're here or not. But it also sets the beginning of an oral auction bid, which would be $275 an acre. So at this time, I would begin the auction with $275 per acre. Are there any other bids at this point?
276.
276.
May I ask who did that bid?
276 is the high bid at this point. Is there another bid?
280.
280. And that's Andy?
Yes.
We now have $280 as the bid. We would, are there any further interest?
282.
We have 282 as the top bid. Is there another bid? 285 is our top bid. Are there any other bids?
287.
287. 287 is our top bid. That's per acre. Any further bids?
288.
$288 is our bid at this point, per acre. Any further bids?
290.
290 then is our top bid at this point. Are there any further bids?
300.
300.
And who was that from, please?
$300 is our top bid per acre at this point. Are there any further bids?
305.
$305 is our bid at this point. Are there any further bids? We now have three, pardon?
310.
$310 per acre is our bid at this point. Are there any further bids? We have a bid now of $315 per acre. Are there any further bids from that point?
325.
$325 per acre. We have $325 per acre.
327.
We have a $327 bid. $327 per acre. Are there any further bids?
330.
We have a bid of $330 per acre. Are there any further bids?
335.
We have a bid of $335 per acre. Are there any further bids? If you want to calculate, I'll give you time. That's fine, just as long as I get eye contact from you. We have $335 per acre bid. We have a bid of $340 per acre. $340 per acre is our bid at this time. I'll give you another minute here.
342.
We have a bid of $342 per acre. Is there another bid?
350.
We have a bid of $350 per acre. Any further bids?
We're done.
$350 going once. $350 going twice. $350 going three times. $350 per acre then for three years. Lee Smith?
That works out to $80,500 annually.
What'd you say?
$80,500.
That works out to $80,500 per year then for three years.
For three years, $241,000.
$241,000.
$500.
$500 for a three-year total. Okay. I want to thank everyone for coming. We've got a couple of things here to do yet. Lee, if it's possible, can you go back with Lisa and sign the lease? Thank you. Okay, moving on then to item number two is the Years of Service Recognition. James Sheets, and James is tied up today. He was planning on being here, so we said, "James, how about you come to our next meeting?" And he said that would be great, so we're going to give him his certificate at the next meeting. So moving on then to item number three is our Budget Amendment Public Hearing. And so at this time, we are opening the public hearing. At the public hearing, any resident may present objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the amendment to the current 2017-2018 budget. Were there any written comments, madam?
There were none.
There were zero. Okay. Moving, there were zero written comments, questions, or objections on file in the County Auditor Recorder's Office. There are three, let's see.
Seven individuals.
Seven, okay. Thank you for counting for me. Of the seven individuals attending the public hearing, are there any people who wish to speak for this or ask any questions? Not, that's zero? Ask again, are there anyone asking questions? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion then?
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we close the public hearing at 9:13 a.m.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Steve's here in spirit, right?
A little more than that.
A little more, okay.
You're not contagious anymore.
No, I'm not.
So we're good to go there.
Okay. The time is nine, what do you got?
9:13.
9:13. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Selassie?
Yes.
Paton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, that has been, that is moved and seconded and approved. Moving on then to Resolution Number Four, which is 2018-0014, our budget amendment. The proposed 2017-18 budget amendment was published in the Marshalltown Times Republican and the State Center Mid Iowa Enterprise on February 8th, 2018. Do we have any written comments on this one?
No, zero.
Zero. There are zero written comments, questions, or objections. There are, and we said, seven individuals present. So now therefore be it resolved by the Marshall County Board of Supervisors that the 2017-18 county budget amendment be adopted, and the county auditor recorder be authorized to certify the file, the budget amendment, and file the budget amendment as published and presented at the hearing dated at Marshalltown, Iowa, this 20th day of February 2018. The Chair would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2018-0014, 2017-2018 budget amendment.
Mr. Chair, I will second that.
Been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution of 2018-0014. Is there any discussion or questions?
Are there any general highlights about this FY '19 budget?
This is just the amendment.
Oh, this is just, okay.
We, this is done annually. You know, there's some areas that may get overspent, and we have to amend that, and those funds are not re-lebbed against the taxpayer. They are paid out of our reserves, which is why we need to always have adequate reserves. But this just...
This is for this fiscal year?
This current fiscal year that we're in that ends June 30th.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Chair. That's why we have a question time. Not a problem. Any other questions? Board, have any questions, comments? If not, roll call vote, please.
Selassie?
Yes.
Paton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. The resolution has been adopted. Moving on then to item number five, Resolution 2018-0015. This is the reappropriation of funds for FY 2017-2018. And it's be it resolved that the estimated appropriations approved by the Board for the various departments in the county at the beginning and during the fiscal year are adjusted to reflect the expenditures incurred and to be incurred. This happens every year, and there again, as David said, anything that is over comes out of our reserves. Anything that is under goes into our reserves, and so this is, this is why this is accomplished. On your agenda, it shows, it shows all the departments where they're at and the reappropriation. But the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2018-0015, which is the reappropriation of funds for fiscal year 2017-2018.
And I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the Resolution 2018-0015. Are there any questions?
Typically, when we do this, we have a little explanation on the numbers that did change. The largest number that changed is in the county engineer. Paul, you want to give us a real quick update what that change was in your... Yours was the lion's majority of it, so if we cover this one question.
It's construction, it's construction monies that are changed because of funding and aid from federal, from FEMA on that culvert. There's also big changes in fuel and snow removal because we could redirect some of that money to other areas. So that's, those are the big ones.
Any questions for Paul?
All the other changes are really pretty small.
Pretty much, yeah. One is Lucas's, that had to do with the elevator. And it wasn't the elevator was high. Planned on paying some of it for one year and the rest in the next year, and the parts didn't show up and couldn't do it. So it wasn't Lucas's fault. Any other questions? Okay, if not, roll call vote, please.
Selassie?
Yes.
Paton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. This has been adopted. Moving on then to item number six. Item number six is a supervisor's budget presentation. And Mr. Thompson, and Mr. Nearing, that puts some things together, and this is your time, sir.
Well, it's, it may be my time, but this is our budget. I just deliver the message. In bad times, remember not to shoot the messenger, and in good times, don't give the messenger any accolades because this is a team event. By nature, I'm a number cruncher and an analyst. Numbers have a tendency to speak to me, and they tell a story. The story that we've got to tell today is a good one. Our mission at Marshall County is to deliver good, effective government that's efficient, transparent, and fiscally responsible. When we work effectively, we try to make our decisions to be purposeful, thoughtful, and strategic. We try very hard to be efficient at everything we do. Each and every one of our employees tries to deliver the best services that we can, and we work hard to give the taxpayers a good return on their investment for their tax dollars. Transparency, without question, is a very big thing that we have a very strong belief in. We do our best to be transparent and make our decisions in public, have good discussion in public, pay attention to what the needs and the discussions are, and sunlight, without question, is always the best disinfectant. From a fiscal responsibility standpoint, we work extremely hard to be good stewards of your tax dollars. And once again, please keep in mind, this is a team approach from top to bottom. Everybody is on the team, and they're all rowing the boat in the same direction. Without question, we go from challenges and objectives that we have. Some of our challenges have been economic factors. We are always concerned about valuations that have been rather flat these last few years. We're always concerned about decreasing funding from the state of Iowa that is followed by unfunded mandates. We're concerned a little bit about the commercial business property tax credit and the fact that we have to have our budget done and certified before the state makes their final decisions. There's always an increasing role in government that's a challenge. A lot of that has to do with the society we live in, and over the last few years, our largest increases in our budget have been public safety. That purely comes from the society that we live in today. It's just a fact of life that we're getting used to. We don't necessarily like it, but it is what it is. We constantly have a good source of objectives. We identify and pursue sources of non-tax revenue. We look for grants. We've been very successful in that in the last few years. Probably one of the biggest has been the million-dollar grant that we received from the North Center Street Bridges that we hope to be able to let next year and get construction going on in the 2019 season. We constantly work to minimize costs wherever possible. That's easier said than done, and it's not real glamorous work when we minimize cost. A couple of real good examples in minimizing costs that are affecting our budgets as of late have been our work that has been very diligent in workman's compensation and a return-to-work policy. This budget year, we will be spending $250,000 less on workman's compensation insurance than we did just four short years ago. That comes from a team approach. Those are real savings that go into the taxpayers' pockets. Another area has been the fact that we have a wellness program, that everybody gets a wellness exam on an annual basis. Our employees have been extremely cooperative on being very diligent with medications when they have to get them, as far as them being generic. And in this particular budget, we have levied $200,000 less for our healthcare costs for our employee system than we did in previous years. Now, that does not mean that we have made any cuts in the quality of our healthcare insurance. What it does mean is we are self-funded, and our balances have gotten to the point where we can ride that balance down a little bit rather than levy that amount, and we have rewarded the employees with a reduction in their out-of-pocket expenses for their healthcare and also the taxpayers, because those are the two entities that pay into this fund. So we've made sure that everybody gets a little bit back in their pocket. We will continue to assist with economic developments, with Marshall Economic Development, and specifically, we will be keying in on what things can occur in the entire county, not just Marshall Economic Development and the city of Marshalltown. But we're concerned with things that may be going on with the sewer system in Green Mountain, that we think if we get that put together, it will lead to some economic development in that area. There's some good possibilities of things coming up in State Center. There's some economic development issues that will be coming up in one of our elevators down in Pickering and Gilman. So we work on economic development throughout the entire county, not just local here. As always, whenever positions become vacant around the county, we try to evaluate if some of those duties can be shuffled around and absorbed. Those things have been done in the Auditor Recorder's Office, they've been done in the Treasurer's Office over the years, in our GIS office, and in IT. So we constantly look at delivering government more efficiently. Some of our accomplishments over the last few years, we've worked very hard to maximize the dollars that we have spent. In secondary roads, we have purchased equipment that has allowed us to be able to set box culverts and do things with our own staff and our own talent that we have in-house rather than hiring it out, and it has allowed our county engineer to stretch the road use tax dollars to give a bigger bang for his buck. He's also purchased equipment that has assisted in the ditch cleaning, which will give additional bang for the buck. We've also made investments in new technologies. Specifically, this last year, we have purchased a product called Tyler Technologies that will give us massive improved efficiencies in doing our payroll functions, in doing time cards, and in the general billing from departments to the offices when people get... And we just, we just had the treasurer in the back of the room going, "Yay." That's his, the other one that should be very happy is our auditor staff. This addition of Tyler's Technologies, hopefully if it performs as promised, will lend itself to a lot of manpower or labor hour savings throughout our staff, which in turn should reduce some of our spending. We've constantly made investments in technology to be able to more efficiently do things. And last but not least, in our accomplishments in this particular year, in April of this year, we should be debt-free on our bonds. We still have a very minor amount of debt left over on leased vehicles, and in the budget that we are looking at, those leased vehicles will be budgeted for rather than leased, and that in itself will lend approximately 7% savings on those vehicle acquisitions. In the coming year, if we get lucky, at the end of that year, there should be funds left over that we may be able to pay those leases off in this 2018-19 budget year. We're not there yet, but that's a hope and a wish. It may not, it may not totally come true. So we've had challenges, objectives, and priorities. If we do get those leases paid off, our debt will be at the chemical equivalent of absolute zero. We will be joining a handful of counties within the state that are at that point. There's not a lot of them. We will definitely, without question, be one of the largest counties that will have no debt in the state of Iowa. Those being said, we've kind of set our priorities, our accomplishments, and our goals. Let's go on to the budget process. This is a year-long process for everybody involved in this. We constantly look at the budget on a monthly basis. This is a year-long process for everybody involved in this. We constantly look at the budget on a monthly basis. But when we start working on it, it begins with a budget letter that goes out from the Board of Supervisors to not only our department heads, but our elected officials, along with the budget sheets that they start with the previous year and what their needs and want are for the next year. The board meets with each elected official and the department heads, listens to the wishes and wants of everybody, and then it's our job to prioritize everything, put the budget together. Not everybody gets everything they want within their budget. We do our best to be fiscally responsible and listen to every single request and grant what we can and still take care of the taxpayers. That starts in December. We have all our meetings. We publish in February, and we are forced to certify our budget by the middle of March, which is before the state does theirs, but we get it. We also amend. And when we do amendments, those are for spending only. We do not amend for revenues, and we just got done with amendment today. So, that gives you a little bit of story on the process. One of the questions we constantly get from the county is, because we collect the taxes for all the taxing entities, of where do your taxes go? We collect the taxes for the entire county. They go to pay the needs of the county. All 10 school districts within the county, 13 incorporated communities, the community college, 16 townships, the assessor, the ag extension, and this year, there will be an addition of the 911 Commission. The 911 Commission will be a flow-through from the county where the money will come into the county and flow through the commission. I know there's been a lot of press lately on this in the newspaper. We can only speak from the county's perspective. From the county's perspective, the dollars that we had levied previously for 911 have been eliminated from our budget and simply shifted over to the 911 Commission dollars. So, the net effect to the taxpayer is as close to zero as it can be. We cannot and we will not speak for the other taxing entities. That's their budgets and their announcements to make, and they will handle it accordingly. When we go from collecting all these taxes, one of the other questions we constantly get is, what is the breakdown? Where does your tax dollar go? For methods of just being simple, I push this particular slide, and we're going to break this down as if you had a home in Marshalltown, Iowa. The school will take 43 cents of your tax dollar. Marshalltown City will take 37 cents of your tax dollar. The county will take 16 cents from your tax dollar. Area Education Six will take 3 cents, and all other entities, being the assessor, ag extensions, and the state of Iowa, will take roughly a penny. Of those numbers, the largest percentage is the school at 43%. It also can be said when you look at the state budget that 47% of the state budget also goes through the school. And quite frankly, that's very appropriate. The majority of our dollars are going to raise the best crop that we have in our communities, which is our children. It's their future. That's good spending. We need to keep that crop here. And through economic development, good government, hopefully, we can raise our children, educate them accordingly, and keep them where they belong, which is right here at home. Once we get past where your dollars are spent, we get into the mathematical formula of how your particular tax dollars are arrived at. That is, the levy rate multiplied times your valuation would equal your tax. So, right now, we've got this chart. We're going to talk just about the levy rates for 2019. General basic is at $3.50. We did not go above the $3.50 limit. That has been a decrease of 35 cents for this particular levy year. General supplemental had an increase of 39.22 cents. Debt service had a decrease of 40.9 cents. Our mental health area had a decrease of 2.6 cents for a total countywide levy decrease of 39.368 cents. It's comfortable to note that over the past 10 years, the county has reduced their levy rate three times, six times, and remained the same for three. On another note, I pulled a property tax statement of an individual that I know going back to 2010 and 2011. In comparing that to the same property tax statement dated 2017 to 2018, in 2010, the county took 18% of that tax dollars, and that 18% equated on this property to $1,168.72. The identical property, seven years later, the county took 16%, or a reduction of 2%, and took $1,168.38. So, over a... From 2010 to 2018, the county's portion of the taxes on this home in the city of Marshalltown actually were 34 cents less. Numbers tell the story. When we get past the levy rates, our next screen, James, is going to bring up is taxable valuations. Now, these are non-TIF dollars. Ag was up. Residential was up. Ag buildings were down. Commercial was down. Industrial was up. Multi-residential was up. Railroads and utilities with and without gas and electric were down, and utilities with gas and electric were actually up a little bit. When you look at this particular slide, if you were to draw a straight line from the left-hand edge all the way across to the right-hand edge, and you look at the percentage of increase from that period, from 2010 to 2019, when I say that those taxes are less on that identical property, this is why. The valuations have increased at a slower percentage on that property than the levy. So, the levy has gone down at a greater rate than the valuations have gone up. Once again, we have to go back to that mathematical formula. The levy times valuations equals your tax. We've struggled a little bit these last few years because these valuations, non-TIF, have been rather stagnant. Some of our increases this year in valuation came from the addition of the Laurel Wind Farm. Another 5% came on. That's the last addition from the Laurel Wind Farms. We've got a few more 5% additions that will come on from Vienna Phase 1 and Phase 2 in the coming years, but we're coming to a close on those instances. We can never know what the city is going to do with increasing or decreasing their TIF valuation. So, those things also have an effect on our budget. When the city releases TIF dollars, that means that all the taxing entities can levy against that, and your property taxes go down. Going to the next portion of the slide, we're going to get to revenues. This slide, it needs to be stated that is the net, not the gross. So, the numbers on this slide are what is applied to a particular property or the revenues. After all, credits have been put together. So, when you get to a net property tax decrease, net property taxes went down $111,000. Penalties and interest, we always hope that those are zero because we hope that everybody pays their taxes in a timely fashion. But at the same time, we've had a slight decrease in penalties and interest. Intergovernmental, these are the dollars we get that can be in fees and associated goods from other entities, road use tax, local option sales tax, transfers in, that we've also had a decrease there. Licenses and permits, slight increase, but it's an extremely small number. Charges for services, a decrease. Use of money, this is the interest that we receive on any of our monies that are invested in the commercial sector as far as retaining any interest. I don't think it becomes a surprise to anybody that interest rates are paltry low, and those monies are down a little bit. If we go back just 10 years, we're off almost $700,000 in revenue from what our funds used to bring in because of interest rate reductions. Once again, this is the net. That's after rollback and commercial deductions. I believe this interest is going to probably remain the same for the foreseeable future. It's kind of the new norm, and we're just going to have to get used to it until the economy truly turns around in all segments of the economy. Things are turning around slightly. Our main concerns are on the ag economy. Let's get over to the next slide, which will be expenditures. Once again, our largest single expenditure is public safety. This one has an increase of almost $1 million. Now, of that increase, I always like to explain the outliers. This particular outlier, that $1 million, includes the money that flows through public safety for the new 911 levy, which is approximately $993,000. It also includes the $120,000 that we have previously levied through debt service for the purchase of our vehicles for the sheriff's department. This year, rather than taking them on a levy, we are going to purchase them outright, which will give the taxpayer more bang for their buck. But at the same time, it appears on this particular line item, we're spending more. It's just that it's been shifted from debt service to public safety. A small decrease in physical health and social services, coupled by a small decrease in mental health, ID and DD. It should be noted that the mental health levy, that is assessed by the region. We don't make that levy up, and that levy is down. The state of Iowa has mandated that the regions have reduced their funds by 20%. There are some bills in the legislature that will allow that fund to only be reduced to a maximum fee that they can carry over to 25%. Currently, they're giving us two years to run that money down. The new things in the legislature is to give us an additional year. And I know that there are some plans on how to ride that down with some purchases of some things and some additional service in mental health. So, we should be in pretty good shape there. When we look at environment and education, this is the county conservation. That is a decrease. Keep in mind, the conservation budget is one of those kind of hinky things. If our conservation department does not budget for something, they cannot spend the money. At the same time, if they don't raise the money through donations or a grant, they can't spend it. So, these dollars here are basically a reduction in grant funds that came in. Those have nothing to do with property tax dollars. When we look to government services to residents, it's also a slight decrease. Once again, it's a very minor amount. When we get to administration, this is the cost of the administrative portion of our budget in delivering the services to the citizens of Marshalltown, Iowa. That has been a decrease. Part of that decrease is without question, the dollars that are levied for spending for employees and other areas of administration. Once again, when we combine services and we combine duties, those are a definite decrease. Debt service has decreased, obviously. Once again, it's because we have reduced the levy. Also, that comes with an addition of not only will we not have debt service in next year's budget, but we've also added the capital savings to that. That capital savings over a four-year period, we're hoping to get up to approximately $1.2 million and maybe more dollars, and that will be for the future project that we're going to be starting in the planning phases, which will be the final portion of redoing the courthouse from the gutters all the way to the spire, which will also include the tax... The clock tower. We're hoping when this particular project comes into effect, that we'll simply be able to write a check for it, not have bonding fees, not have interest fees, and once again, give the taxpayer the greatest return on investment that we can for the dollars that they pay. Staffing, once again, that is the reduction in staffing. We are doing more with less. We have a phenomenal group of employees here, and they're doing tremendous job. The next slide has to do with our carryovers. We've come out with our audit this year. Our ending fund balances are in good shape. If there was anywhere that I had to maybe point out what we need to be looking at for the next budget season, it would be the dollars that are in rural services. And we'll have to wait and see how that goes through the next year, and we may have to make some adjustment to keep real good funding in there. But of our carryover, which is approximately $10 million, $10.8 million, 6.4 million of that is restricted spending, $40,000 is committed, $174,000 is assigned, and unassigned is at $4 million. The carryover is extremely important. These are the dollars that allow us to exist and pay our bills in between tax collections during the year. Also, at the end of this particular budget year, we will be coming out with a resolution that any dollars that are left over in general basic, we will be sliding over into our capital savings fund. We don't know what those dollars are going to be yet because we're not at the end of the budget year. But once again, this is the portion of what we are planning on doing and going for the future and looking at our five-year plan. So, in conclusion, I think every single employee, elected official, and department head has aspired to be very good stewards of the tax dollars. We have approached this as a team and will continue to do so. It needs to also be noted that we will be debt-free and the addition of saving for future capital projects. It should be noted that the savings that will be for capital projects will be in a fund that cannot be spent for anything else other than capital projects. So, it's not money that's just being squirreled away. They can be used for any purpose. It's actually going to be for capital projects or infrastructure improvements that we may have to buy for IT and equipment to more efficiently provide government and the capital needs of the citizens. The financial strength of the county is good. It's good shape. This has been done through managing the details. A lot of the details are not glamorous. It's not glamorous to look at work comp. It's not glamorous to constantly look at dollars coming in in healthcare. But by managing these things, not only through our employees, our elected officials, and our department heads, they have added to real savings. So, once again, just like starting off this presentation, I'm going to end it the same way. Numbers tell the story, and our story has been a good one. Any questions? Comments? Additions?
Thank you, David, for kind of putting this in the layman's terms. This can get muddy pretty fast, but you're able to speak to...
Generally, when we start this process, everybody's eyes glaze over, and they roll back in their head like a shark attacking. But, you know, the numbers do tell the story. They tell the story of the management of the county. And this board, these last few years, has taken a very good approach, in my opinion, of running it like a business. We are in a business. We're in the business of providing goods and services to the taxpayer. They're our customers. We need to listen to them and take care of them.
Any questions for David or for the board in general? If not, I too thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Moving on then to item number seven, which is our 2018-19 budget public hearing. At the public hearing, any resident may present objections to or arguments in favor of any part of the proposed budget. Madam Auditor, were there any written comments?
There were none.
There were zero written comments, questions, or objections on file in the county auditor recorder's office. Of the seven individuals attending the public hearing, are there any questions at this time? If not, there would be zero individuals presenting oral comments, questions, or objections. With that, then, the chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. With that then, the Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we close the public hearing at nine forty-eight AM.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote please.
Solacek?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. The motion has been carried. Moving on then to item number eight, the Resolution two thousand and eighteen-sixteen, which is to adopt the budget and certify taxes for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen-nineteen. And the proposed two thousand and eighteen-nineteen county budget was published in the Marshalltown Times Republican and the State Center Mid-Iowa Enterprise on February eighth, two thousand and eighteen. And there were, I'm going to assume, no written.
There was no comments or questions.
And are there any questions here?
The, so is there a total, like it's probably somewhere in there and I didn't see it. Is there, I'm sure it is, is there a total budget that just, I know it's probably hard to boil it down to a single number, that the county will oversee for twenty nineteen?
If you look at the very back page.
The one with really little numbers.
That is the budget as published in both the Times Republican and the State Center newspaper.
Okay.
That will give you the total budget and keep in mind that only approximately fifty percent of that total budget is levied towards the property taxpayer.
Yep.
The remainder of that fifty percent comes from intergovernmental funds and grants.
That's easier to read than the one in the newspaper. Nothing against the newspaper, but we're cheap, so we buy as little, small as we can get by. Okay. Any, any further questions? If not.
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we adopt Resolution number two thousand and eighteen dash zero-zero-one-six, Adopt the Budget and Certify the Taxes for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Eighteen, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That is Steve.
It is Steve.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to adopt the Resolution two thousand and eighteen-zero-zero-sixteen. If there's no further discussion, if there are no further questions, roll call vote please.
Solacek?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution two thousand and eighteen-zero-zero-one-six has been adopted. Okay, we have done item number nine. Moving on then to item number ten. And seldom do we go nearly an hour and we finally get to the consent agenda, but item number ten is to approve the minutes from the regular session of February sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Item eleven is file clerk of District Court Report one through eighteen, general supplemental surcharge of eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifteen cents. And item number twelve is approve the claims as audited and authorized by the County Auditor Recorder to issue the month of February. The February list of claims will be part of the first meeting in March. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Mr. Chair, I will second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as printed. If there are no questions, roll call vote please.
Solacek?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, I remember.
I'm going to ask for a pause.
Yes.
I don't show that we took a, had a motion or a roll call vote on the farm. I know that we said who awarded it.
Oh, we did not.
We did not.
Okay.
We had, we had Mr. Smith go with the signature to sign.
Good one.
Thank you.
Missed it.
That's why you get, uh.
That's why you get the big bucks.
Well, I'm sitting here.
I wasn't going to say that, but.
My, my lines aren't filled in. And I was busy writing on the backside, keeping track of it, so.
Okay, well, the consent agenda was just approved, so let's go back to item number nine then with a, a bid of three hundred and fifty dollars per acre, which is eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand five hundred dollars per year, two hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars for three years. The Chair would entertain a motion to accept this bid.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we award the lease to Lee Smith in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars per acre, which works out to eighty thousand five hundred dollars per year for a three-year period of two hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars, with one half of the annual cash rent being payable on the first of March and the other half being payable on the first of December, each of the years of the lease term.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions here? All the supervisors are in agreement with what we just did? If so, roll call vote please.
Solacek?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on then to item number thirteen, which is a Resolution two thousand and eighteen-zero-zero-seventeen, Resolution for Transfer of Funds, whereas, whereas is desired, the transfer monies from General Basic Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. The sum is three hundred and seventy-five thousand. It's ordered to be transferred from General Basic Fund to the Capital Projects Fund for capital improvements for Marshall County facilities and future information technology purchases for Marshall County. This is, this is a new deal.
This is the savings we've been talking about.
Yep, this is a new deal. So, any questions?
This is coming out of two thousand and eighteen budget, right? The FY eighteen?
The upcoming budget.
Oh, it's coming out of FY eighteen?
Yeah. This, this.
No, this is this year's.
I'm sorry, we changed it. This year's, we also put it in for next year's budget.
Okay.
Yes, in both years, so.
Okay.
So, you'll, you'll hear this again.
Thank you.
Next year when we do the transfer again.
Okay. Are there any questions? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution number two-zero-one-eight dash zero-zero-one-seven, Transfer of Funds.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded by David. Moved by Solacek, seconded by Thompson to adopt the Resolution two thousand and eighteen-zero-zero-seventeen, Transfer of Funds. If there, and then backing up one sentence, then this, this will be dated then as of today, February two thousand and eighteen.
And so it begins.
So, we'll do roll call vote.
If there's no further discussion, yes, roll call vote please.
Solacek?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
I wanted to get it in before we completely lose Steve's voice because I think it's close.
Okay, this has been adopted. Thank you. Fourteen is secondary road discussion.
I just wanted to give a quick reminder to, to residents that it's dust control season again, even though it doesn't look like it today. Their, April seventeenth is our deadline for, for residents to, to sign up with their vendor and just wanted to give a, just a, a quick update on how we do this as a, as Secondary Roads coordinates with the vendors to, to get the sites mapped and we prepare the sites so that they have a, a good spot to, to apply the dust control product. But the county and Secondary Roads really doesn't have any teeth in this as far as with the vendor, it's strictly between the resident, who is the customer, and the vendor. Then that's, the, the resident pays the, the vendor and doesn't pay the county and so any, anything where the customer doesn't feel like they're getting a proper application or something is the way it should be, it's really between the resident who's the customer and the vendor. And it's just, sometimes there's a misconception that the county has a hammer that they can swing here and we really don't. We're trying to let the, the market dictate the price. We don't set the price. The vendors set their prices and there's competition between, right now, we have three vendors that apply in the county and it's just a, it's, it seems to work, but it's, it's sort of a minimal involvement. There's other ways we could do this, but every option involves Secondary Roads being much more hands-on on dust control. So, it's just a, this is just kind of a, I just wanted to get the, the information out there on where we're at with the process.
Any questions here, Paul?
Paul, will that be made clear in the letter that goes out to the residents?
Yes, yes, and we, we do send it out to past customers and if there's new customers, they, they find out from neighbors or find out, it's, it's hard to get all the information out there, but it, we do put a, we put a general provisions out to the different vendors and they give that to their customers. They contact their customers every year, I think, as well, so it's just a matter of, but it's, it's still, there's no, there's nothing set on how they have to do that. It's their own business plan that, that each vendor uses, so.
The letter actually comes from the vendor.
Yes.
Instead of the county.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any questions? Not, thank you, sir. Or you have more for us?
Nope, nope.
Several pages there.
It's all about dust control.
Okay, okay, very good.
Shouldn't, it shouldn't be this complicated, but.
Thank you, Paul. Moving on then to item number fifteen is public forum. Is the time set aside for public to make comments on topics of county business other than those listed on this agenda? No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. Anyone wishing to share the mic? If none, we'll move on to sixteen. Sixteen is adjournment. The next regular session is March twen, uh, March sixth, two thousand and eighteen at nine AM. All business to be acted upon at that sessions should be submitted to the County Auditor Recorder's Office or the Board of Supervisors Office by Thursday, March one, two thousand and eighteen at one PM. There being no further business. You come before the board. The meeting is adjourned at ten o'clock AM. Thank you for coming.
I hope it's a.